The University of Wisconsin Oshkosh Fox City's campus assists the City of Manassia with video recordings of city meetings. Manassia residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website. To express opinions about City of Manassia issues or these broadcasts, contact the mayor's office, (920) 967-3608. Contact a city alderman. Contact information appears on the website. Or complete the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.
I'd like to call the City of Manassia County Council Meeting to Order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the reprieve and justice for all.
Do we have the roll, please?
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Tomgrotty.
Here.
Alderman Tedgrotty.
Here.
Alderman Repella.
Here.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Isenak.
Here.
Alderman Savannick.
Here.
Alderman Hammond.
Here.
All are present.
Thank you. First item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing, and it is for the proposed City of Manassia budget for the year 2023. Director Sessman, did you have anything to add? Or... Okay. That's not good. Someone pulled the...
There we go.
There we go.
Third time. All right. So tonight, we'll be approving our 2023 budget. We had a total of four budget review sessions, all of which were public meetings where departments had an opportunity to present their budgets to the council. And later in the agenda, we have three, basically, three standard resolutions tonight that relate to the budget. The first resolution is the one that allows us to levy taxes, and then from there, we set our mill rate and prepare our tax roll. The second resolution is the resolution that adopts all of the budgets for all city funds. And then the third resolution basically sets forth the amount that we plan to borrow for our 2023 projects. By the time we actually do the borrowing, this amount may change. It's just important that we have this resolution in place at that time, and then when we actually do the borrowing, we'll bring that forward to council at that time. The 2023 proposed budget does have a tax levy increase of 5.47%. We have two things that we have to keep in mind with our budget: expenditure restraint and tax levy limits. So as far as expenditure restraint, we're well within our limits. For that, we could have increased our expenditure budget 8.6% and we increased it 5.29. So that will allow us to receive our state aid payment in 2023. So from that perspective, we're more than good. What usually just presents issues is the levy limit that the state imposes on municipalities. So we were able to increase our budget, our levy, just under $337,000. However, tonight, we're proposing to add an additional amount to our allowable levy. That amount is a combination of an adjustment for some prior year unused levy, as well as the increase in charges assessed by our joint fire department. So those amounts altogether are what get us to our proposed levy increase of the 581,722. And as the budget sits right now, we only have the capacity to add 1,421 onto our levy. So we're that close to those limits this evening.
Alderman Savannick, did you have something?
Quick question for you before you go on any further. You had mentioned the added increase from the fire department's budget. How was there an added increase if we've already... Was the City and Nina add something, or what? I don't get it.
So what... We had passed this resolution, I think it was last month. So if we have a joint fire department, either municipality that's part of that department is able to use the increase as a levy adjustment, basically. So what we are proposing to do is to use that increase from last year's budget as a levy adjustment.
And what are we talking about? What areas?
As far as dollar amount.
Right, because I sit on the Nina-Manassia Fire Rescue Committee, and I'm...
Right, so we are looking to use their increase of...
So Alderman Savannick, what this allows us to do is increase our levy limit an additional amount, which is what was already presented in the budgets.
Which we voted for.
That's what was presented in the budgets as we went through those meetings over the past two weeks.
So it's not anything added since our budget process?
No.
No, we just, like I said, we're taking, we're using that amount.
And the amount was about 247?
215,000.
215?
For the fire department.
Okay.
Increase, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So with that, I would invite anyone from the public who wishes to speak this evening regarding the proposed City of Manassia budget to come forward.
Good evening. Sandra DeBill Taylor, 545 Broad Street. Basically, I just had from a member of the public, you know, none of us want to see our taxes increase, and that usually is the case whenever the budget hearing comes around. So I kind of just wanted to give an overview. First of all, this year was a challenge reviewing the budget online with the new format. But honestly, the bigger challenge for me personally was trying to watch the last four budget review sessions. The audiovisual system, I don't care really where you take the money from, it has to be changed. It has to be improved. The first night I attended in person, the following night that I watched online, the police department, five members of the police department were passing around a microphone. The night that the city attorney did her budget, the only microphone that was working was the handheld one she had. So any questions posed by any member of the council, you couldn't, for 45 minutes, all you saw were heads moving and the attorney responding to questions. The mayor has proposed reducing the council budget by $500 because the meetings are shorter, when in fact, a lot of the meetings weren't even televised. So I, first of all, I'd like that $500 put back in the council budget, and I went online and various communities have requested requests for proposals for a complete audiovisual, the microphones, the web scene, the entire thing, and it varies depending on the size and scope. But I propose, setting aside $50,000 for a request for proposals, I sent you all my little spreadsheet that I did. Appleton recently submitted one. You can use that as a template, because that's what they were doing. They're using the ARPA funds, and that would be something that those dollars could come from. The city also receives over $180,000 every year in cable franchise fees. The mayor has proposed $30,000 for a salary study that I would strike. Recently, several positions were readjusted, and those salaries were given. We have several new employees. I don't think it's appropriate. We all know that salaries have increased, and that was kind of done a few months ago by the mayor to say, okay, let's change these. I would prefer that $30,000 go towards something else. He's also proposing a 4% increase for nonrepresented employees. I don't really have an issue with that, except in years past, well, first of all, he wants it to start December 25th. I would postpone it till January. I would also suggest, and it's been done in the past, that it be split 2% in January, 2% in July, that it wouldn't be such a burden on the taxpayers. And also, those new employees that have been hired within the last six months, and those employees that were recently readjusted, do not qualify for that raise, because they were hired knowing what their salary was going to be. But looking over this, granted, it's frustrating when the city has received over $2 million in ARPA funds that could go toward numerous projects, and some of the money has been designated already to the police department cameras, and some of it went to IT, and $1 million is going to Jefferson Park, and we all love Jefferson Park. But I was discouraged to read that the majority is going toward repaving Cargus Drive and a new roof on the main pavilion. I mean, in the years to come, that's what, that was the big project that we did, and we do nothing with the Memorial Building. I just think our priorities are off base. Actually, I would also like to see, I mean, we have been kind of piecemealing things. The Memorial Building has to be addressed. The library wants to do a major renovation. The police department has been piecemealing over the years improvements to their building. We don't quite know with the growth with the fire department, is the local fire department, is that a good spot for it? Personally, this city hall, this thing does not work for me. Years ago, we had done a study where we prioritized, this was back before we did the steam plant and actually before the library was remodeled, priorities of capital improvements on our buildings. What is the next priority? I think before we start spending lots of money, I mean, then we have the pool, or is it going to be an aquatic center, something that should be evaluated. Where are we going to spend our money? Do we really need it? Because honestly, I think people forget, as much as we want to provide all the services of a big city, we're the smallest in the Fox Valley. And when people move to a community, no matter how many trails we have, they're looking at the tax rate. That's why Greenville, Harrison, Fox Crossing, they're all growing because they have a smaller tax rate. And we keep expanding our levy limit to the max. And even during COVID and all these other times when we had the opportunity where budgets were surplus, we still spent them. We have never cut that levy down, and the rate we're going, we never will. I could go line by line through everything in here. I really hit hard on the attorney's budget, because a lot of recodifying the code. The major problem with our website, when you pull up and you want to search municipal code, is that it doesn't just search the code, it searches the entire website. So as her example online that I witnessed watching, she put in chickens. She got hits on every memo and minute and agenda where the word chicken appeared, instead of just searching the municipal code. That's a simple fix. We don't, at this point, have to spend the money on a recodification. I would suggest it in the future, but there's too many typos and errors in the current code that you can't just dump it into a new system. It's not going to work. And there are some other things there, too, but I will leave it that, at that. I'm hopeful, because in the parts that I did get to view that weren't cut off, I didn't see one adjustment. So I hope you came with your calculators tonight, that we can kind of knock some dollars off this. Thank you.
Is there anyone else tonight that'd like to comment on the budget? Seeing no one else, we'll call the public hearing to a close, and we'll move on to the report of department heads, staff, and consultants. We have the minutes and communications this evening. Do we have a motion? Alderman Savannick.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for us to receive Minutes E through E and Communications G.
Second.
There's a motion, a second? Any discussion? Do you have discussions, Stan?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Item G, Laura. I should have let you know in advance. Thank you. Oh, that's right.
Hang on for a second with that one.
That's right. That was budget that we just had.
Hi, Laura. So can we discuss the Bryn Underground Stormwater Grant Award a little bit? I know the amount, interesting, $149,999.99. They couldn't give us that extra penny.
We actually, so the way their, their system was set up is that if you get more points, if you were on, you kind of had to override the system, so to speak, to get the extra points in the rank, the ranking scale. So that's the reason it's 149,989. But more or less, it's $150,000 that we did receive a grant from the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources for the Bryn Underground Stormwater Facility. So we've had this project on our radar for the last couple of years. We knew, working with the developer and where the development had been laying out, that the, this urban non-point source construction grant comes in the odd years. So kind of knowing where we were going to shake out and that it was going to be winter construction, we, I decided that we should apply and try and capture this, and we did receive it successfully. So we will be applying that to this project come the start of the year.
And later on in the agenda, I believe in...
Board of Public Works.
Board of Public Works. We'll be talking about that. But in the Board of Public Works, we're talking about 400-something thousand. Can you explain where, where the spending and for the rest of this 1.2, almost 2, 1.1 million dollar project falls?
Right, so we were estimating about 1.1, 1.2 million in that, that general realm. The purchase of the system itself, this underground system, it's an eight-foot diameter pipe, 1,600 linear feet. It is a corrugated metal system that is specialized, and what we are looking at and will be proposing and bringing to you for Board of Public Works is direct purchasing that system itself. The remaining funds on that will come out of that, that total amount. The remaining 655,000 or so is going to be in contract bid, and that'll be earthwork material. We're going to have stone. We have some contaminated material that has to be hauled, pipe connections, that sort of a thing. So that's going to make up the remainder of that entirety.
The reason I ask you these questions, because I did receive a communication being concerned, and I know Alderman Nichols called me today about this with the same concern about the bidding process, and there will be a bidding process, especially when it comes to...
Absolutely.
...the entire project itself.
Correct, and we would have lumped this into the contract, the purchase of the system. But we ran, again, we're still waiting on some details with the contamination, refining the limits of that, so to speak. And we, we were waiting to get those results before we proceeded, and then kind of where we've been laying out here, we, it takes six weeks to build this system. It's specialized. So if we wait for the contracts to get signed, to do it under the contract with a contractor, we likely will run into issues with getting it constructed in the timeframe that we have with the development site. So that's why we're, we're looking at this at this time.
And...
But the contract will be executed as, as normal with a contractor.
We, I appreciate that. I wanted to get that out of the way in case some people from the gallery left and get, didn't get a chance to hear that, but we'll discuss more of that in the Board of Public Works, because there's a lot of other things to talk about in that, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries. Item F is public comments. Is there anyone who wishes to make public comments?
Sandra DeBill Taylor, 545 Broad Street. Just a little PS, what I previously, previously mentioned. For those of you who are not aware, during the televised meetings for the budget hearing, none of the library discussion was videotaped. None of the park and ruck discussion was videotaped. That's huge for anyone in the public that wants to know what's going on. None of the tiffs were discussed. It cut off before Sam finished. So for me to get up here and start saying, cut this, cut this, when I don't know what was really discussed, it really leaves the public at a loss. What I do, if any of you have cable in our board someday, put on the Cable Access Channel. The City of Oshkosh, they air like all their committee meetings. I think that would be important, especially the planning commission, you know, and we have the RDA, and we have even the Nina-Manassia Fire Rescue, the police department, all of these things should be aired, you know. COVID may strike again or something very similar to it, and during the COVID shutdown, Fox Crossing actually livestreamed their meetings on Facebook. Things can be done to engage the public. We shouldn't have to wait a couple of weeks to see what happened two weeks ago. So that's why I'm really pushing. There's money in there. I tallied it up just for lodging and meals throughout the city. There's $23,000 budgeted when you start adding up the departments. And that's not mileage, and that's not promotions, and that's not seminars, you know, that's just lodging and meals. So there's low-hanging fruit out there, and we can cut this budget. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? Seeing no one else, we'll move forward. Now we can do that, Travis. With the consent agenda, Alderman Savannick.
Oops. Thank you, Mayor. If it's all right, I would like to take each one individually, seeing we're dealing mostly with dollars. But other than that, we have our minutes, and at this time, I'd like for us to approve the minutes of 11:722, and then our budget review minutes of 11:222, 11:322, 11:922, and 11:1022.
There's a motion, a second? Any discussion?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank my colleagues very much for a, and the department heads and their staff that came together with this budget. That includes the mayor. This, of all budgets that I've ever dealt with, and there have been several... Say something went wrong. Yeah, we've got to make sure everyone has their phones off, please. So anyways, with that, I know the mayor really struggled this year with this particular budget. I know we say these kind of things every year, but this was a tough budget, and I do think that there is some things we can take out, but it, it's not going to have that big of an effect on the levy, period. I will make some suggestions later on, but what I wanted to get at, seeing I couldn't find another place to discuss this on the agenda, something that Ms. Taylor just talked about, and that is having live broadcast. That is, if, if a teenager can do this on YouTube, we should be able to do this. So maybe that is something, if, if we don't televise, like the planning commission or the park board or something, maybe we could do a livestream in the smaller meetings, and that would not be a big expense. So I would think that that's a very good idea, Sandra, and that I think that's a direction that we should probably look into.
Thank you, Mayor. On the budgeting process, also, Council President Savannick made some good points with what he was getting at. It is a new process. I think Jennifer and Craig for their time and what they had to put together for this to get it out in time. But, well, it's here, and we're voting on it tonight, no matter when it came out. But anyway, prior to this, and when we first started the budget meetings, the 11:2 date of '22, the mayor did a little bit of a recap, and he and his staff and the department heads reviewed their budgets before it came to council, and I think they took out a half a million dollars already. So that's pretty, pretty darn good, I would say. So there's some that'd be taken out, a little here and there, but I'm very proud of our department heads and how they run their ship, should I say, or their departments, and we got a good staff, so. And they're accountable to the budget, and they have been staying within their budgets for the last couple of years, too, so that's good, too. But I just wanted the public to know that there was close to a half a million dollars already taken out of this budget.
There's one open over there, though. We can apparently stand with, like, one of those doors open if the noise is down out there.
State statute requires that we have our...
We do have one door open, so we're still okay, but seeing no other, seeing no other discussion on the minutes. All those in favor of the minutes?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Item three is a change order. Do we have a motion? Alderman Savannick.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I would like for us to approve the change order to Don Hippis and Son Contract Unit M0002-09-21-00504 for the 2022 water main and sanitary sewer reconstruction. This would be a deduct in the amount of $115,449.16, payment number four.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second by Alderman Schmidt. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries, eight zero.
Item four is a payment. Do we have a motion? Alderman Savannick.
Thank you, Mayor. This payment is for Don Hippis and Son, and I love all these zeros, but I have to say them. So this is contract unit number M0002-09-21-00504 for 2022. These are water main and sanitary sewer reconstructions in the amount of $75,129.90, and this will be a final payment.
Is there a second? There's a motion, a second by Alderman Schmidt. Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries, eight zero.
Item five is a change order. Do we have a motion? Alderman Savannick.
Thank you, Mayor. This payment is for Don Hippis and Son, and I love all these zeros, but I have to say them. So this is contract unit number M0002-09-21-00504 for 2022. These are water main and sanitary sewer reconstructions in the amount of $75,129.90, and this will be a final payment.
Is there a second? There's a motion, a second by Alderman Schmidt. Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries, eight zero.
Item five is a change order. Do we have a motion? Alderman Savannick.
Thank you, Mayor. We have another change order to Northeast Asphalt this time, contract unit number 2022-03 for street construction and rehabilitation in various locations throughout the city, and this is an add in the amount of $57,552. This is the first change order payment.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second by Alderman Schmidt. Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries, eight zero.
Item six is a payment. Do we have a motion? Alderman Savannick.
Now we need to pay Northeast Asphalt Incorporated, and that is contract unit number 2022-03 for street construction and rehabilitation of various locations in the city. This amount is $391,853.16, and that's payment number two.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries, eight zero.
Item I is action items. The first item is the accounts payable and payroll. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of November 4th through November 17th, 2022, in the amount of $1,414,440, sorry, $490.70.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion, a second by Alderman Repella. Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please? Is there a second?
I'll second.
So motion and a second by Alderman Repella. Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item two is the Winnebago County property foreclosure list. And I don't remember if we discussed this at the last meeting, but Director Schrader, would you like to share with us what this is about?
Certainly. So each year, the county considers properties, tax foreclosure properties, and puts those into a process of foreclosure on those homes. And what that is, that entails is, if you do not pay your taxes for three years, the county will commence that process. There is an opportunity for the individuals to pay those back several times. This is kind of a long, extensive process. But basically, at the end of their cycle, it goes to, it goes to a court to be placed upon foreclosure. This year, the properties that were foreclosed upon included 304 Third Street, 127 First Street, 838 Third Street, and 1220 Grove Street. So of those three, four properties, the one, 838 Third Street, following the judgment of property foreclosure, they did reach a settlement with the property owner to pay those taxes back, so that one is, would no longer be available. But the other three would be available. The one property at 304 Third Street is just a very small, triangle, legal non-conforming lot that would be very, very difficult to construct a home on. Staff's recommendation is not to acquire that, as we would not be able to likely get an infilled lot there. And if we were to acquire it, it would just be a lot that we would be maintaining and cutting without really need for any parkland. The other two, 127 First Street and 1220 Grove Street, staff does recommend acquiring those using the Strong Neighborhoods property acquisition dollars. And then what that would entail, we would go to the county, ask them to commence that process, to close on those properties. I would envision these properties coming back to the common council if we were to choose, to move forward with these, to decide what, how we want to move forward with that. Is it an RFP? Is it a listing contract? And then are there any parameters such as tax, being tax exempt, provisions, the construction period, you know, do we want to construct it within a year, things like that? So basically, that's where we're at. Staff does recommend moving forward with those, too. There is one question, I guess, I do want to add to 1220 Grove Street. So this lot has been vacant for about 20 years, and so there's some questions as to why that property was never foreclosed upon. Unfortunately, we don't, we do not have the historic knowledge of that property. So we have discussed with our EPA grant folks about potentially doing a Phase One on this property to determine if there was any type of potential contamination. Again, the original lot was platted, I believe, in the late '60s. House was constructed in the '70s, and there was just some questions of the heating, the petroleum heating for the house, that possibly there was a leak with that. But again, I do think it would be in the best interest of the city of Manasha to still move forward with this acquisition, to still get this lot infilled and back on the tax roll.
So with that, what we're looking for is a motion to acquire one or several of these, or a motion to, I don't know if it's to deny, but to not acquire any of them, depending on what the council's desire is. Does anyone have questions or wish to make a motion? Alderman Sevigny.
Thank you, Mayor. So your recommendation is to acquire the ones you talked about for the Strong Neighborhood property dollars, and then market those sites. I think that's a good idea, except for it sounds as though we didn't do enough investigating yet. So is there something that we can do with the county as far as indicating that we may have an interest?
That process is already there. I think they would like to move forward with this. If they don't, if the city would not acquire this, basically, what happens is they start their auction process. So what happens with non-homestead properties is the city of Manasha or the taxing entity gets basically a first right to acquire these properties for cost. If we were not to do that, they would then be placed upon the auction site, and they would likely move forward in that realm. Again, the Grove Street property, I still think, from a city standpoint and a city protection standpoint, I do think we still move forward with that. I do have a meeting with our EPA consultants tomorrow, and we have discussed that Phase One, which would provide us limited government unit exemptions for any concern of that regards. But again, just, again, moving forward, I think there's, if there would be of any contamination, it's my understanding that it's fairly minimal, it does not spread, and it's just basically taking it to, that area to a different landfill.
Okay, I see. Oh, I thought Alderman Nichols had a question.
Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. And sticking with that particular property, if contamination were to be found, we could clean it up and still have a saleable property after a certain amount of time.
Correct.
And you answered my question about the advantages or incentive to purchasing these properties and what the plan would be moving forward with them. Thinking ahead to the eventual sale of these properties, would the proceeds from a sale go back to the Strong Neighborhoods program?
That's what I would envision in future conversations about setting a sale price and having those discussions of where those funds go. But basically, if they're used with Strong Neighborhoods property acquisition, and we sell them for any type of money, I would assume those funds would go back into the program. Again, I think the other possibility with the Strong Neighborhoods acquisition is that, you know, potentially, it has, you know, this contamination, should, you know, should you find it, potentially, that sale price is lower. And for instance, you know, within my memo, I had noted, you know, if we had sold the property for a dollar, so we acquired it for the $16,500, and we sell it for $0, so no money comes back, there would be a 10-year return on that investment with a new $200,000 house there. So again, if nothing's found and we sell the lot for $10,000, $15,000, again, that's an immediate return back into that program, is how I would envision that.
Thank you for that. And what would be the timeline on, assuming we move ahead with the purchase, what would be the timeline for bringing a plan back as far as the marketing and saleability of the properties?
We would likely do that after or around the same time that the county officially accepted our, accepted our motion to acquire. So if we do decide to move forward with that, they would take that to their committee, I think their finance committee, to officially accept that sale. That sale can happen anytime within a week to 30 days, you know, depending on how we're working on things. I would envision that, again, more information would come out tomorrow with my conversations with the EPA consultant, and that I believe the county is meeting in early December to make that official transaction. So I would hope, within the next two meetings, that we would have something back.
Yes, the finance committee meets the first week of the month, when, I think it might be before that. The first Thursday. Oh, it is the eighth? Okay. Great. Mayor, as far as the motion goes, would it include the parcel numbers, or is the address fine?
I think the address is fine.
All right. I will yield the floor because I see other questions. Thank you.
I was going to make a motion. I don't, basically, I think the motion would be in order to go along with the memo from the community development department to either acquire or not to acquire the properties using Strong Neighborhood dollars.
So the motion is to...
Because he does have a recommendation not to acquire one of them, so that's why I stated it, based on the memo.
Do you want to word it, Haley? Something to the effect of, as per the memo dated?
November 7, 2022.
To acquire the property at 127 First Street and 1220 Grove Street, and to not acquire the property at 304 Third Street, or something to that effect.
This will all have to basically come back to us, I think, anyways.
Is there a second? So motion and a second by Alderman Tom Grady. Sure. I think we should add "as recommended" or something to that on the end of that. Acquire the properties as rec... Oh, there you go, at the end. Okay. Perfect. Alderman Grady.
Thank you, Mayor. I just need clarification. So if we're going to use the Strong Neighborhood money, we're just looking at number two and number four?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Nichols.
Thank you. I was just going to clarify, 127 First Street and 1220 Grove Street, the recommendation to acquire. Thank you.
Make sure we put that in the minutes, I guess, the two that we're acquiring, that when we do the minutes later on. Any other discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item K is ordinances and resolutions. The first is Resolution 36, and this is the resolution levying taxes for the purpose of paying the operating expenses for the 2023 budget. So the way that this would work is first, we would need a motion to approve the resolution, and then after that, you could amend the resolution if you wanted to add or subtract things from the budget. Does anyone care to make that motion? Alderman Sevigny.
For the sake of bringing forward any additional levy changes, I will make a motion for R3622, this resolution levying taxes for the purpose of paying the operating expenses for the year 2023, the city of Manasha.
Is there a second? So motion and a second by Alderman Ted Grady. And at this point, then, we would accept amendments. Alderman Sevigny.
Yes, thank you. My first one has been the one that's been discussed probably the most, and was discussed by myself during the budget process. Just so the new members realize, you don't have to wait till this day to make your cuts. You could have done that at any point. Because this is a newer budget, I thought it would be fair for the departments, the mayor, and anyone else who wanted to throw their opinion in first. But I totally agree with some of my colleagues that have brought it to my attention, including Sandra, who brought it up this evening about the study. I talked about it during the budget process. I know that our surrounding communities have done this study. My feeling is, why don't we look at that? Let's look at those before we jump into spending $30,000 on a study. So at this time, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion on page 190, I believe it is. Wait, I might have the wrong one. Yes. 190, and I believe that was account 512-2-01, to deduct $30,000 for the salary study.
So the account number is actually 10202?
Right.
512-2101, just for the clerk.
So you want that 100 in there, too?
Sure.
Okay. They were all 100s, so.
Yeah. You said 2-01, so.
Oh.
I just wanted to make sure that the clerk has that on her motion. Yep.
Okay. And if people from the gallery, if you, this isn't even, what, a font size two? So I purposely didn't put my contacts in today so that I could actually read the budgets.
So is there a second?
I'll second.
So motion and a second by Alderman Repella. Is there discussion?
I guess I had my discussion, Mayor. I basically said that maybe this isn't the time, especially with the fact that we just got done going through some of this just a month ago, where you felt that individuals in the city weren't being paid enough, and then you're also asking already for a pay increase. So I just feel that $30,000 is quite a bit of money for this particular study. I'd rather give the employees some of that money than spend money on a study. So that's where I feel.
Alderman Grady.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't object with your proposal, your amendment for the $30,000, but I do have some issues with it, based on, I'm the chairman of the personnel committee for the last six years, and we always have these conflicts. This position here and this position there, it's not, it's the positions. And we do rectify them when we get them in line the best we can, but the study is something that's needed. It's been needed when the other city attorney captain was here, and she started looking at this. And this would take us eight people, and the mayor, because he's on the personnel committee, out of the questions to vote on this position or that position. Here's your study, here's what it came back, this is what we're going with. This is black and white. Three $30,000 is a lot of money, and I don't know how I'm going to vote on this one. I can see us taking it out, but I do think it is needed. And I'm just going to express, I'll leave it at that, being involved with, you know, all this, these amongst individuals. So it's a good point, but I have my reservations.
Alderman Hammond.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to advocate support for keeping the salary study. I think it gives us a precedence to work off of. It's not looking at individuals in these positions, rather, it's looking at these individuals and how they are within our community, comparing it to others, so that we can pay folks fairly and compensate them at a market value. So we're not wasting our director's time with constantly trying to retain folks because they can get a higher-paying job to the community over. So I think the study takes out any of the guessing, it takes out the concern of favoritism or not giving someone the compensation that they deserve. And we should be paying folks that market value, try to pay them well. So I do support the salary study because I think it takes any question out of it. Is $30,000 a lot? Yes, and I don't disagree with that, but I think the study could serve our community
Alderman Repella.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, a salary study, usually that's put in to get pay raises. And I'll use Travis as an example.
We should be using specific people.
I won't use that, then. My weed man, he's, we come back with the salary study, he's $5,000 overpaid. Are we going to cut his pay by 5,000? Salary studies are usually just to give people pay raises. Fox Crossing did a pay rate, did a salary study. We could use theirs, we could use Kekana's. There's a bunch of other ones that we can use. When we use, if we'd use Appletons, they got 70, 80,000 people to pay that live in their city. We're lucky to get 17,000 people in Manasha. And so to use a salary study from that city would not be good. But I support Alderman, Alderman Sevigny, for the, removing the salary study. We've got enough information that we can do and use to have our own salary study. We don't need to spend $30,000. to spend $30,000. And again, it's only used to pay raises, not for pay cuts, which it should be. It should be in both ways. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Alderman Savick?
I just want to clarify something my colleague in the 4th District said, and that is, it takes the question out. That is the furthest thing from the truth. I've been up here many years, and we've had studies done before, and it didn't take the question out. People still felt, oh, well, I think we're paying too much because this is what Nina's getting. Oh, no, this, we can't do that because Appleton is going to hire that person away from us and those things. So it doesn't take the question out. My point is, we're going to spend money on a study that has been done in Appleton and in Fox Crossing. Let's just grab... We have open government. We can grab their study, look at it, and do comparables ourselves so that we have a better understanding of what a park and rec person earns, or what a person in any of our department heads should earn. $30,000? First of all, I'd like to know how that number even came up. That is a... We've done a lot of in-depth studies that never came into those kind of numbers, and they're just going to give us the same old blah-blah stuff that we get because they make a living doing these studies. And I just think it's really a waste of taxpayer dollars.
Just to answer that question, we did get a proposal from the same company that has done them for both the utilities and, I believe, Nina. I'm not sure who Fox Crossing got. Appleton had someone different. I'm not sure when the last time we did one of these was, Stan. I don't know if you know, but it has been over 20 years because it was before I was even Alderman, was the study that we're using. And back to Alderman Repella's question, when we did these at the utilities, we did freeze some wages. So if they were considered above what the salary grade was, those people got frozen at their current rate until such point that cost of living increases caught up to them. So it does go... It did go both ways there. Not sure who's next, so I'm just going to keep going. Austin?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a little bit of an issue with the concept of not doing the salary study and just grabbing at other folks' salary studies in neighboring communities because positions that we have within our city might not be the same job description of the one in our neighboring cities. So how are we going to really base it off of if what is within that job description is different? Because each community is different and unique. And to the mayor's point, if it's been 20-plus years since we've done one, I mean, the economy is substantially different. We have inflation, which is a global issue. Countries in Europe have a far higher issue than we do. Wages are stagnant. There's just all these different things that are bringing us to this moment. A once-in-a-lifetime pandemic, like I think right now is a great time to do something like this.
Alderman Grady? You guys switched your microphones again.
Again? Here, I'll just talk on this one.
That's fine.
And then we'll... Yeah, we messed them up.
They did that a couple weeks ago, too.
Yeah, we did have that a couple weeks ago. Thank you. I'm going to chime in and say I support this study being done. It is long overdue. We do need to compare apples to apples within our own community. I kind of look at... I don't like the comparison of going to Nina, Appleton, for the same reason that I don't think we're comparing the same things. We need to better rein in what our actual job descriptions are right now because a lot of them have changed, where people have absorbed other entities of their job, that now we can get that all to reflect that and put that all together. Just as kind of a crazy little side note, Kimberly Clark won't take Georgia Pacific's study and pay people accordingly. So I don't think we should be taking other people's information and trying to make it fit our community. We need to do this by ourselves. I think this is very, very well warranted and long overdue. We can kick the can, just like we did for a lot of other projects. It just ends up costing us more later on. $30,000 isn't high. I've talked to people in HR within the industry, industries out there, and I was told $30,000 is not high for a complete study to be done. So, thank you.
You guys could switch microphones before you vote. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's important to remember that it costs a lot of time and money to hire and train folks if we have a constant churn happening. And I think that the City of Manassha has fared pretty well during this uproar in the labor market of recent. And the nature of the labor market is very competitive right now, so we need to do what we can to retain good employees and attract good employees when we need to. It's important for us to be competitive in the marketplace. And it's also really important for us to use data to help us make informed decisions up here. And so I support a wage study. It's long overdue, and I think that it will... I think now is a good time to do it as well. Thank you.
Alderman Savick?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I hear these same arguments all the time, and when you... You wanted to talk about apples to apples, but you're not going to get apples to apples. You're not going to get comparatives. You're not going to have a study that makes Manassha totally unique in this study. It's just not going to happen. I've seen how many studies that have come past this community, and we haven't followed a one. We have not followed a single one. Then people say, but it's a good study for us, so it gives us some kind of direction, which way to go. That's what they elected us to do. And that's why they elected a mayor, someone who should be an administrator, who should know these things. And I'm not saying he doesn't. I'm just saying, these are... He knows that when we lose a person, that if we need to hire someone, we add incentives or we put it out there. It's, to me, it's going to be general. Earlier today, Sandra talked about the study that we had with the utility, that we didn't follow through any of that. We had the property... Help me with the term here. The facility study. We didn't follow that. Actually, we did the opposite. We did almost the opposite of what that study told us to do. And we spent a lot of money on that study. So the garage didn't get built until last year, and that was one of the number-one things put on the docket. The Health Department was supposed to be one of the top things, too, and that wasn't done. They talked about changing City Hall. We didn't do that for years. I mean, I still have that study in my file cabinet, and I laugh every time I pull open that drawer and see that. We have never followed any of the studies we've done. We've only spent a lot of money on businesses that have one purpose, is to do these studies, to sell to us. They may provide some good information, but we should be good enough up here with the people that we've hired to do this, to do these jobs, that we don't need to spend $30,000. $30,000, I... Maybe it's not a lot of money when it comes to the studies that they're charging today, but $30,000 is a lot of money, I feel, that we don't need to spend. Like I said, we're talking about, in this budget right now, there's a proposal, I believe it's 4% increase across the board. I would rather not... There's some people that feel that's too high. I would rather retain that 4% and cut this $30,000. I'd feel more comfortable. Pay the people instead of paying a study.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing no further discussion, we have a motion on the floor. If we could have a roll call vote on that, please? It's a tie. I'm going to vote against it. She just said it was a tie, so...
Motion fails four five.
Did I?
Oh, I did vote wrong.
Well, it's still...
Look and see how I vote on this.
That's not how I vote.
Clark, can we redo the vote, please?
Well, the vote's been done, but you can ask that your vote be changed.
Can I change my vote?
Yes.
To against it, please?
Yes.
My apologies.
Okay, so then, if we're going to change that, or... Attorney, if he changes that, then does my vote disappear, or how does this work?
We don't need your vote anymore.
Okay, so then it would be...
No, we know how I vote.
Okay. Okay.
Put it in anyways, right?
Yes.
Well, I apologize for clicking wrong.
It won't be the first or the last time that someone does that. So do we have other amendments that anyone?
Yeah, I have one more.
Alderman Repella?
Yes. This one is on page 365. It's those office folders, the office equipment, number 10010015142401. I don't know, it's shelving and dividers for $1,750. Page 365, so I don't know what department. That's in building maintenance.
So it's in building maintenance, yes?
Office equipment, it's 100...
Office equipment.
Buildings and grounds?
Yeah.
514-22-03, under office equipment.
Yeah.
So what are you proposing?
I'm proposing that we take that out. $1,750 and dividers to organize Room 137 at City Hall.
Director Sackett, is the entire $1,750 for the shelving?
No, typically, there's $250 left in there for basic materials, so it's $1,500 that was proposed for the dividers.
Let's take out $1,500.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't taking something out that we didn't know that we were taking out.
No, thank you very much.
So there's a motion to remove $1,500 from that line. Is there a second? There is no second, so the motion dies.
I can't second it myself?
No, you can't second it yourself. Alderman Savick?
Thank you, Mayor. I know Randy brought this one to my attention, but we're going to need to give Public Works the mic. I don't know where the spot is, so there was the filling, the fill that we were going to use, and apparently that fill has been taken care of by the developer out there.
Yeah, no, no, that's that lot. Laura, that's that lot I'm trying to be wiping.
What was the dollar amount in that?
I think that was in the TIF, correct? Sam, do you have any idea if that fill?
Was it in the...
I don't think we had it in the general. I do not believe we had it in the general.
That's why I'm asking the question.
From what I recall, it should have been in TIF 12.
If it's in the TIF, then...
It should be in TIF 12.
So that just needs to be taken out because apparently...
So...
We don't need to make it a motion or nothing. I'm... Okay.
Right, so we... The funding is going towards that fill, and then, yeah, we have some whatever.
Apparently, that has been settled now, so we don't need to have that in the TIF.
That was 2022 budget.
That was 2022.
Yeah.
Okay, so it was in 20... But regardless, it needs to...
Regardless, it's 2022's budget. We're looking at 2023's budget. The individual that can speak intelligently on that, because I think it was just a decision late last week, is not here. But we do believe that was a TIF 12 expenditure.
Just right. And if it is, I just want you to, whoops, be aware of it, that it does not have to be part of the line item of that TIF in the future. So it would have to disappear.
Correct. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, we have a motion. There wasn't an amendment, right? Okay, so it's just the original motion, R. 3622?
No one has any?
Or just the two of them, it looks like. And seeing no other discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
I have a discussion.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to speak. Jennifer needs the mic. So Jennifer, if we approve this tonight, you said the total spending this year is up by $337,000, correct?
Are you talking to the levy itself or the expenditure budget?
Total spending.
So our total general fund spending went up 5.37%?
One more time.
The total general fund expenditures went up 5.37% to general fund. Is that what you're asking?
I guess, but I'd like a dollar number. I mean, how much did we spend more this year than... Or what... How much are we planning to spend next year over this year's...
So our total tax levy increase, and that would be our general fund, our recycling fund, and our debt service fund, the total levy increase is $581,772 from last year.
Okay. What was the $337,000 you talked of earlier when you were talking? I wrote it down while you were talking.
Oh, as far as our levy limit, we were...
We could have gone up...
We were only allowed to increase our levy by the 300, just shy of 337.
Okay.
However, our budget was presented proposing to use additional amounts, a combination of a prior year's unused levy, and then the exemption for the fire department as well, which that brings us to the $581,772 levy increase.
My problem is, I wrote total spending, and then I didn't write the word "limit." So I apologize for that. What was the 215 number? Oh, that, never mind, never mind. I know now. I'm looking at my notes. So if we just left the budget as is today, the city's portion, not the school district or anyone else, our increase would be what percent?
Were you looking for our tax rate?
Yes.
Our tax rate for Winnebago County, as proposed, would be $8.55. That is a decrease of 55 cents from last year. And our Kellymont County would be $8.72, and that's a decrease of 42 cents from last year's tax rate.
So Jennifer and I have been trying to figure out an easy way to explain this.
Right.
Closing TIF 9 resulted in around $400,000 in increment that used to go to the TIF, coming in to fund our city services instead. So our... What you're actually going to see as an increase is about 2%, not 5%.
Right. With the closure of TIF 9 or without that, our levy increase actually would have been basically 2.38, which was much more in line with last year. But due to the closure of TIF 9, basically, we can... due to the closure of TIF 9, basically, we can, we're proposing to have that levy increase of 5.47% without, basically, the ramifications of that.
But it doesn't mean that taxes are going up 5%.
No, I realize that, because, well, there was reassessments done also.
Right.
And Mayor called me and told me my taxes are gonna go up like $38 or something like that.
I ran a few people, several of the aldermen and a few other people.
But, so when people in Winnebago County get their tax bill, and it says City of Manasha, and then it shows the percent, what, and I'm very happy to see that the tax rate, we've never been in the eights before. And I told the mayor two years ago that I believed that we would be doing that for 2023, and here we are. They used to be in the tens. So what is that number gonna be? When I open up my tax bill, and I see that the school district, again, is gonna charge 9 or 10%, what is gonna be the percent with the city? Because what happens is, soon as people get their taxes, they start calling me and complaining how high their taxes are, until I start to explain them, I have nothing to do with Winnebago County, or the state of Wisconsin, or the technical schools, and more importantly, the school district, which is often the increase, and this year, the voters overwhelmingly agreed to spend another $100 million.
Yeah, so right now, I plugged in the tax rate for all of the taxing entities, so as a whole, like for Winnebago County, the tax rate would be going down 2.24%. That's taken into consideration the city, the school, county, all of them. And then Calumet County would be going down as well. So I do have the levies from all of those to be able to figure out the tax rates.
And when they see the cities, though, what is that number gonna show, most likely on a $150,000, $200,000 home?
So if it's $150,000 home for the City of Manasha portion, an individual would see basically like an $83, $83 decrease in their taxes, for the City of Manasha portion, if it was $150,000 home.
Yeah.
For Winnebago County.
So what's interesting, though, is it depends on which neighborhood you live in, right? Because when we reassess the neighborhoods, some neighborhoods went up faster than others, so every house isn't going to be the same because of that reassessment. And that's the confusing part and the, it's complicated part, but as Jennifer said, it's about a 2%, it's very similar to last year, about a 2% on the city portion, but depending on if you're in a neighborhood that accelerated quickly, or in a neighborhood that didn't accelerate quickly on property values, you're, like, yours went up hardly anything, houses on the island went up a lot more than what yours did, because the values are increasing faster on the island.
More homes sold there, probably.
Could be.
And that, that's the market.
So the really good news, though, is the assessed rates, we are lower than both Appleton and Ina, which I don't think has happened in the entire time that I have been in city government.
Mayor, it's never happened in the entire time I've been in city government.
And that is because we did do a reassessment where those two communities didn't. So Appleton's rate is 948, and Ina's rate is 873, is what they were proposed.
And they're gonna have to do that, because state statute requires them to be at those levels.
So I think what's the most telling, though, is the equalized values, I mean, equalized rates, and we are smack dab in the middle. Oshkosh is at 857, Kakona is at 854, Manasha is proposed at 823, these are all proposed numbers. Ina is proposed 758, and Appleton 752. I don't know when is the last time that we were not the top equalized rate as well. So this is good news for us on a lot of fronts, that we are right in the pack now, we're not significantly higher or lower than anyone else, plus we have much lower electric rates, plus we don't have a garbage fee, plus we don't have a wheel tax or a transportation fee, so I think our city government is.
In other words, you don't have to pay, when a new street gets put in front of your home, you're not being assessed for that, which is quite rare in the Fox Cities.
So we're right where we wanna be, right in the middle, we provide good services, and our tax rate is very comparable to the other communities, and our fees are much lower. So I think we're going in a really good direction, and I really commend staff for working so hard to get to that point, because 10, 15 years ago, when I started this position, our equalized rate was, well, in 2014, our equalized rate was 1045, and now we're at 823. So between growth that our community development has helped with, as well as being more efficient with everything, as all of our department heads have done, it's really had a huge change in what our tax rates are and what our cost of living is here.
The other thing I wanted to address, Mayor, is borrowing.
And that's the next resolution, I believe.
Okay, but it does affect this budget.
Sure.
And the point is, is that, I'll say it till I'm blue in my face, this council and the council before it did an excellent job of getting that city garage done when they did. You're never gonna see those rates again, and that's what concerns me, is that, I've been following this very closely, I mean, by the time we go out to borrow again, we're gonna probably look at another 1.5% to 1% increase, and I'm just wondering, can we do that sooner than later?
We can definitely bring that forward. I think that there's pros and cons on both sides, but Jennifer and I can bring something forward for everyone to look at, and really look at what the cost of holding that money is for a year as well. Even if the interest rate goes up, if we're just sitting on that money for a year, what is the cost of doing that as well versus borrowing later? And we won't plan on borrowing till the end of 2023, right?
Do we have to wait till 2023? I mean, can't we go out and borrow right away? I'm telling you, I'm just letting you know that.
We would still have to wait until 2023.
Next month, you're gonna see another 0.75% increase on the increases we just got.
Based on how the resolution, but we would have that option of borrowing sometime in 2023, if it's to our advantage, or beginning of 2024, so we'll really just have to weigh where interest rates are, you know, like I said, and look at it at that time, but we would have to wait, for sure, until 2023.
But I think I, I think the mayor gets what I'm saying.
Oh, I do, and Jennifer and I have had this conversation several times.
I think you need to follow through on that, because it's gonna save probably more than $100,000, I'm guessing, if we get things moving.
Well, the other thing that we need to think about.
Then you can do your study, but.
Well, the other thing that we need to think about with that is if we go to the market, those rates are, we cannot pay that off early, typically.
I don't think we can go to the market, Mayor.
We can go to the market, or if we go to state trust, or through local placement.
We'd have to use state trust.
So that's, we need to look at all three of those, and we probably should sit down with elders and discuss that once the budget's done here.
Yep.
Okay. I just want to make sure everyone catches all that, because all that information is very important for what's coming down the pike, especially for the new people, when they start getting phone calls. This helped you understand this a lot better, and like the mayor and Alderman Ted Grady mentioned, the mayor and his staff spent a lot of time, because I know the mayor consulted with me, he was concerned about, he's gotta find a way to reduce this yet by another half million dollars, and they did it. So that's why earlier, when I was talking, I do wanna show, I did wanna show my appreciation, because I've been through so many of these budgets, and past budgets have been battles, they've been fights, they've been nasty, and this council's a good council, they work very well together, and along with its staff, and I'm, I've only voted against one budget in my lifetime, and I will be voting yes for this one.
Alderman Sevigny, I really appreciate that you're thinking about these bigger picture items that are going to be two, three, four years out as well. That shows a lot, that you're looking at big picture items and how it affects our community long term, and that's something that took me a couple years to figure out, once I got on the council, and I'm really glad that people are thinking longer term, not just how do we get past today, but how do we continue to move forward for the next five to 10 years? So I thank you. Alderman Repella?
Yeah, thank you. I had something in here for page 186, Legal Services.
You're too far, we already have a vote started, I can't take another amendment. I asked before.
I did, but then it.
I asked, and no one came up with anything, so.
I couldn't find the page.
Well, you're.
You changed Austin's vote.
Yeah.
That's because he's special.
You're too far along at this point, Randy. I probably shouldn't have even let Alderman Sevigny speak, but.
And that's why I thanked him for giving.
If you wanna comment about the budget, you can comment what you wanted to remove, but, and if it's, if it's $1,000, you're not gonna notice the levy either.
No, it was just $5,000 for the legal services.
Okay, so, so at this point, we have a motion on the floor, and Alderman Repella, you're the only one who hasn't voted, and hopefully it's not a tie.
Motion carries eight zero.
It's all good. Okay, the next one is, I'll let Director Sassman explain what this one is as well.
So this resolution is approving the expenditure budgets for every city budget, so the general fund and all of our other funds, they're all identified separately, so we're approving each budget, and then there's a grand total, and since we didn't make any changes, there would not need to be any changes to this resolution.
Alderman Sevigny?
So I want, because someone wasn't listening, that this is the point where there are specific budgets, like the capital improvement budgets, that if you wanna make your changes, this is the point that you do that.
Yes, you could make a motion, make an amendment on one of these, if you wish to.
But Mayor, with that, I'd like to make a motion for R 3722. This resolution is to adopt our general special revenues, capital project, debt services, enterprise fund, and internal service fund and component units of the 2023 budget.
So most.
The mayor.
Ted, did you second it? Okay. There's a motion to second by Alderman Grady. Any discussion or amendments on this portion? Alderman Repella?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to address the recreation park and rec with the Jefferson softball diamond. Is that the correct time to do this? Because it's in the CIP.
So we do have a special meeting set up to discuss the overall plans for the park and, for the Jefferson Park Plan, and if you did want to change, if the council did wanna make changes at that point, because it's borrowed funds, we'd make it at that point.
Okay, so not tonight?
Not tonight, because we need to discuss the full plan.
Okay.
And it doesn't, the tax levy doesn't change on that, whether or not we borrow for that, so. So if we make the decision we don't wanna borrow for that, or something else, a road project, whatever, we can do that.
So if it passes, if this passes tonight, it doesn't mean that we can't change it later?
Yes, you can change, you can, you can subtract, you can't add to it, but you could, you could say we do not want to do the following project.
Correct, thank you. Did you set a date for that meeting yet?
The 29th, I believe.
Yes, it'll be next Tuesday, November 29th, at 5:30, and you'll receive an email tomorrow about it.
You knew I had a basketball game that night, right, didn't you?
No, I'm sorry, that didn't come up on my calendar.
And Ann has her, her swim lessons, though.
Okay, we might have to look at changing that date, then. We'll see what we can do.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We'll still send out the date and see who can and can't make it, but it sounds like it may not be a good date.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, unless we can do it earlier, maybe?
Yeah, 4 o'clock or something would work great, but.
We'll figure that out, okay. Anything else, Randy?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Alderman Sevigny?
Jennifer, could you, or Craig, could you explain the component unit of this, what that is?
That's our redevelopment authority fund.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing. Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Okay, and item three is Resolution 38, and this is the debt service, debt service portion, and this is for the 2023 borrowing, right? 23 and 23 projects. Alderman Sevigny?
Thank you. I'll move for R 3822, this resolution authorizes to go out for general obligation borrowing and issuance of certificate of indebtedness, and also it levies a tax in connection therewith.
Is there, there's a motion to second by Alderman Ted Grady? Any further discussion on that one? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item N is public comments. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? No? And item O is adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
There's a motion in a second by Alderman Schmidt and Alderman Ted Grady. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned, thank you.
The University of Wisconsin Oshkosh Fox City's campus assists the City of Manasha with video recordings of city meetings. Manasha residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website, www.cityofmanasha-wy.gov. To express opinions about City of Manasha issues or these broadcasts, contact the mayor's Contact a city alderman, contact information appears on the website, or complete the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.